So I'll do my little intro here and then go from there. Good evening and welcome to the April 25th, 2023 Meeting of the Half Moon Bay Planning Commission. We are broadcasting this meeting live on Pacific Coast TV as well as Zoom as we are doing hybrid. We have, we currently do not have community members, but we do allow for anyone that is coming to our meetings to allow them to have public comment. So they will be allowed three minutes for that, whether you're on Zoom or in person. I think we did have a memo that went out this evening that we sent to the Planning Commission, and it's been posted to the website on the agenda under the project. Other than that, I will hand over to our Acting Chair Gossett, and we will start the meeting.
Good evening, everyone. We will start with the--
Good evening, everyone. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Okay, I'd like to just make an announcement that Item 1B is going to be continued to a date certain of May 23rd. So if anyone is here wishing to speak on that item, we just would like to let you know about that. And with that, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes from the last meeting.
I'm just gonna do--
Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call.
It's okay. No worries at all.
Yes, okay.
Let me do a quick roll call, and then we'll keep, we'll move to the minutes. No problem. Commissioner Jonas?
Here.
Commissioner Ruddick?
Here.
And Vice Chair Gossett?
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez and Commissioner, or Chair Hernandez and Commissioner Gorn are absent this evening.
Okay, thank you. And with that, we'll move on to the approval of our minutes from March 28th. Does anyone have any comments about the minutes, or does someone want to make a motion to approve?
I make the motion to approve the minutes.
I'd second it.
Okay. Commissioner Jonas?
Approve, yes.
Commissioner Ruddick?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Gossett?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay. At this point, I will invite anyone from the public either online or in the audience to speak. We have, you're allowed to speak for three minutes on any topic that is not on the agenda.
I don't have, I have, let me just double check online. I have nobody online that's wishing to speak at this time.
Okay. Okay. With that, no one's standing up in the audience, so I will close public comment. And now we will move to a study session on Senate Bill 743 on transportation updates, and we will receive a staff presentation and provide for public comment to discuss, and we'll provide input to staff. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Veronica Vosznak, the Public Works and Sustainability Programs Manager. I'm here today with Sam Traynor. He's a Civic Spark Fellow. Civic Spark is a program through AmeriCorps that connects new grads with fellowship opportunities in the public sector and then also with nonprofits focused on sustainability issues. Sam is with us. He's been with us since October, and he'll be with us for 11 months, so he'll be with us until September. He was brought on to focus on traffic and transportation issues in the city. Specifically, what we're talking about tonight is SB 743, some changes to how SEQA looks at transportation impacts and moving more towards a vehicle miles traveled model. So Sam is here to explain a little bit more about what that is and what we have been doing so far and what the next steps are. So with that, I will pass it over to Sam.
Greetings. Hello. As Veronica said, I will be getting into the new updates regarding SEQA transportation impact updates. Here's a quick overview of what I'll be going over. The first thing I'll be talking about is what exactly vehicle miles traveled is. I'll be referring to that as VMT. And then I will get into the intention behind SB 743 and why they did the changes. And then I'll go through the SEQA analysis for VMT and the four subsections listed below. And then I'll provide a quick summary with a procedure overview and benefits. So before I get into VMT, previously under SEQA, they were using Level of Service, otherwise known as LOS. And the city is still going to be using LOS within the general and regional traffic plan. And that's to ensure that traffic impacts are still being observed. Under SEQA, though, with Senate Bill 743, which was signed into law in 2013 and now has become mandatory in 2020, they will be using VMT, which is going to be accounting for the number of vehicle trips and the length of those trips to a specific development project. And one thing I do just want to note is that electric vehicles will be included within that metric. And what VMT is doing is it's observing emissions of greenhouse gas emissions as well as air pollutants and not looking at driver delay and driving intersection wait times. So a quick example of how this would work within the city of Half Moon Bay is, say that there's going to be an office building with 10 employees. Three of those employees are driving 26 miles, and then the other seven are driving eight. You do a simple algebraic equation, and you get that 134 VMT is applied to that project. Then you can divide that by the number of employees, and you're going to get 13.4 VMT per employee. So it's a new way of measuring how much miles for that development project is going into, going to be into play. So the intention behind SB 743 was due to the fact that the transportation sector accounts for 50% of the state's greenhouse gas emissions. And they have also received data that VMT is on an upward trend every single year. So what they needed to do was figure out how to link the assessment of transportation impacts to other statewide goals, some of these that are listed here, such as Senate Bill 32, which is reducing greenhouse gas emissions 40% below 1990 levels by 2030. And then another big one is Executive Order B 1612, which is a target of 80% below 1990 emission levels just for the transportation sector itself. And the California Air Resource Board, otherwise known as CARB, came out and said that California will not achieve the necessary greenhouse gas emissions reductions to meet mandates for 2030 and beyond without significant changes to how communities and transportation systems are being planned, funded, and built. So they needed to figure out how to create a link between state goals and transportation. So here is a list of how the VMT process within SEQA works, and I'll be going through these different phases and explaining what these terms mean in more detail, starting with the first phase, which is looking at method and metrics. So the method for how the city is going to need to determine its VMT is using something called a travel demand forecasting model, and this is a complex computer model system which is going to be estimating future travel patterns throughout the designated boundaries, such as a county or a city. And they'll be divided into something called Traffic Analysis Zones, otherwise known as TAZs. And the city's going to need to hire an engineering consultant in order to develop forecasting model and in order to have accurate VMT data. And then second is going to need to be determining the metrics. And how the metrics works is due to different development projects creating different amounts of VMT, for example, such as a retail development like Safeway. It's going to be inducing a lot more VMT compared to a residential project, so you need to break down these metrics into something a little more specific so that your data can become more accurate. The second phase is determining what projects are going to be screened out from the SEQA analysis completely. And this list here provided on this slide comes from the California Office of Planning and Research, which has been the main agency providing technical assistance to jurisdictions. And this can be broken down into project-based screening and location-based screening. So certain projects that have been listed off to be exempt from a VMT analysis is something such as a small development, which is going to be generating fewer than 110 trips per day, which accumulates to about 20 units or less of a development project. 100% affordable housing projects are exempt. And then local/regional serving retail, that's going to be under 10,000 square feet or less. And just to put that into perspective, Pasta Moon here in town is about 6,470 square feet, and New Leaf is going to be 20,606 square feet, so they would not be exempt from a VMT analysis. And then also, public facilities such as fire and police stations, listed as, such as other things as post office, government buildings, et cetera, will be exempt from VMT due to serving local populations. And then there's location-based screening, which doesn't apply to Half Moon Bay as much due to our rural location, such as half mile from high frequency or major transit stops. We don't have a lot of those here in Half Moon Bay, so a lot of developments won't be applied to that location. And then there's something called projects in low VMT zones, and this is using something like ArcGIS where you're going to be developing a map of showing where there's baseline VMT and where the average VMT is going to be high and low. And the project screening is used in the phase within VMT in order to help streamline projects through the SEQA analysis part of the transportation impact and help the process go faster. Phase three is something called setting a threshold of significance. So as you can see here, the chart on the right is providing VMT data. Those numbers are not accurate. These are just used as an example. And you can see the metrics that I had mentioned. There's residential VMT, office and industrial VMT, and you're going to have the city average baseline VMT. And then what the city will do is set a baseline 15% lower than the city's average VMT. And we've decided on a 15% threshold due to the OPR coming out and saying that 15% lower than city's VMT average is generally achievable and supported by evidence that this level of reduction connects to the state emissions goals, as I stated earlier, that that's the main intention behind it. So a quick example of how this threshold of significance would work if we were to use it is, let's say there's a residential project that doesn't meet any of the screening requirements I listed in the slide prior. So then they use a travel forecast model to execute a VMT analysis, and they find that this residential project generates 22.3 VMT per resident. And as you can see with the chart on the right, with, under the VMT TOS for threshold of significance, our threshold of significance is 17.3 VMT per resident, so it's exceeding that threshold. So it's going to be determined to have a significant environmental impact within SEQA for transportation. So there's two things that a developer can do from there, and that is submit an environmental impact report, or it can try and mitigate its VMT, which is the last phase of the policy framework. And how the, and how VMT mitigation works is first, there's going to be something called onsite mitigation, and that's reducing the VMT impact by making changes to the project itself, whether making it a mixed-use development project, increasing its density, the different things that can apply to lowering of VMT. And then if the developer doesn't or can't make any changes to the project itself, the city's exploring the option of actually developing a VMT mitigation program. And how this would work is a developer would agree to implement a predetermined VMT reducing project or propose a new one. And what a VMT reducing project lands under, you can kind of see through the draft of the City of Escondido mitigation project, is helping fund projects such as increasing sidewalk coverage, so helping fund the construction of sidewalks, helping also build bicycle network improvements, or helping fund transit supportive updates, like providing shelter, TVs, and whatnot. And a developer will help fund that, and those projects will be done within the city limits. So in summary, for SB 743, the main goal and intention behind it is to help meet ambitious state greenhouse gas emission goals, promote development in locations where there won't be an increase in the amount of driving through infill development, and then also hopefully deliver more active transportation in cities and towns. And this image on the right here just shows the process for evaluating VMT within SEQA, if that helps. And I will now take any questions you guys have.
Thank you for that presentation. Do you have questions?
I don't have any clarifying questions, but I'll ask Sam a couple of questions more broadly after we get past public hearing part of it.
Do we want to start with public hearing?
Typically, we have been doing that.
Okay. Well, I will open the public hearing.
Even better. Thank you.
Since there's no one in the audience, is there anyone online who would like to speak on this item?
I'm saying none.
Okay. We will close the public hearing for this item. Okay. Steve?
Thank you, Vice Chair Gossett. Thank you, Sam, for this report. That's a, that's a big thing to bite off and cogitate on. I'm sorry, I know Veronica introduced you, but tell me again where you're, where you're from?
I'm actually from Half Moon Bay. I grew up here.
And you're in school?
I went to the University of Chico. I graduated last May.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Yeah.
I know Veronica said, I just missed that. A couple of questions. Do you know how the travel forecaster would, would treat, say, a new motel or hotel project? Do they, they have separate modules for employees and guests?
So there is no clear concise advisory on how to handle hotels or motels. And through the case studies I've done, there isn't a set designated way to handle hotels and motels. So most cities are handling those on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, that's interesting. I mean, one could, one could imagine that people traveling from other parts of California to a hotel in Half Moon Bay would account for a lot of VMT compared to a shop on Main Street.
Yeah.
How do they, my second question is, in treating retail, how would you estimate where the employees are going to come from if they aren't, you know, already employees?
So there also isn't a set designated way of predicting how many employees a retail place is going to have. So I know one thing that we were looking at possibly that they were doing is looking at just how much square footage the place was in order to determine the capacity or how many employees could possibly work there in determining the maximum amount of VMT that there could be generated for that place in total.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Commissioner Jonas?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. First, I have to say thank you for being an AmeriCorps person because I've worked with many AmeriCorps personnel when, the work that I do, and they're fabulous. So thank you very much. I do, the question that Commissioner Ruddick came up with as far as, you know, how to handle the VMTs that are coming from motels and hotels, I specifically asked that question during my training session at the League of Cities, and they said that they don't really look into that. So yes, so that is not something that they're looking into. However, some other cities did say that when they looked at their potential hotels and motels, they actually requested the applicant to provide transit for the employees to go back and forth to certain parts of where they're either catching a, you know, a public transit system or traveling them between hubs. So that was somewhat of a solution that they came up with. And then the other question I did ask also was about housing, you know, if we have housing facilities for low-income apartment buildings or, you know, small little village areas and we have workers there, how can the cities help reduce that vehicle miles traveled? And again, the city came up with some sponsored programs to help shuttle people from one place to the other. So that was somewhat of a solution when it came to the SEQA process. So anyway, that's, I'm sharing information, so, but that's what I did ask those specific questions, so it's very consistent with what you said. The question I have is, as far as, you know, the city hiring a consultant to do all this, the city hasn't hired one yet, or it's still going to go through its procurement process to hire one, and when do you think that will occur?
I think that that will happen in the next year or so. There's quite a bit of work that we'll have to do to figure out. The county has some models, so we're trying to figure out how they got those numbers, and we want to have a better understanding. There's also some technical assistance that's available through the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. So we're exploring those options right now to see what sort of technical assistance can be provided to us for free through them before going through the procurement process to fill in the gaps.
And then a follow-up question would be, once this is all researched and the city has, you know, come up with some process forward, I'm assuming that the city will come up with some policy that says how it will implement these procedures and processes.
Yes, that's correct, and we'll, before that policy is adopted, we'll come back before you all to get your, your feedback before that's adopted.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. I have a question, and maybe it's for Jill, not that you can't answer it, but, so if you do come up with policy, would the general plan need to be updated?
I don't have the touch anymore. Thank you for that question. I actually did want to weave in a little bit to connect it to your policy documents. And yes, this would be an update to the circulation element for the general plan. You would not need to amend the Local Coastal Land Use Plan. The Local Coastal Land Use Plan policy anticipated this happening. So VMT is acknowledged in the Local Coastal Land Use Plan, is needing to have a standard established, and it is the measure for determining significance with respect to SEQA. As, and by the way, we've absolutely been delighted to have Sam working on this project with us, and it's just been a kick to, he digs in deep, and it's really important. So the, he mentioned the level of service. That is, we still are going to look at it. It is not going to be a SEQA threshold item, but it is still a policy in your Local Coastal Land Use Plan because we're looking to check on just safe intersection movements, flow, emergency vehicle access, the kinds of things that your community cares about. And so that is maintained as a policy-level contact for you, touch point when you're looking at projects above and beyond VMT in the SEQA document. So that's part of it. I also wanted to just note a couple other things that are not in SEQA that are transportation related. Well, the primary one is parking. Parking is no longer a SEQA criteria. Now that said, we, we still look at it because parking overflows in the event that they have a secondary effect on some other kind of impact area. So we do, we do look at that. So I just want to, just because it's not specifically offered up as a SEQA item anymore, we still think about it just to make sure that there isn't some kind of unintended consequence that stimulates a SEQA problem that we should analyze. So there's that. The hotel question, I'm glad you all asked it. I've been working on that for a lot of different reasons, but the, the state OPR, the Office of Planning and Research, who provides the guidance that I think a lot of what Sam and Veronica have been tapping into, in fact, in an early session that I went to a couple years ago, they said you don't need to worry about hotels, all those people are already traveling anyway. And that was the very, they literally said that in this, this state meeting. And so we've been working on figuring out a way to follow the OPR guidance using a 15% reduction threshold, which is the threshold that we're bringing forward with the rest of this policy. And there's also quite a few things that we can look at in terms of how the VMT, a final VMT policy relates to the city's various transportation zones relative to the Local Coastal Land Use Plan and the City Council Planning Commission and Coastal Commission's intent that development be focused in the town center area. So that, that also impacts how this, how this will work. And so all of, all of the questions and comments that you've had are really helpful to us. It's a little frustrating on our side of the hill to manage to get these reductions. We don't have enough density. We don't have enough high-quality transit, and so it makes it much more difficult. A number of affordable housing projects, however, do have exemptions, and we think it's important for us to explore them and make them known to you and to the City Council before this policy is adopted. At this point, from what I've seen, I'm going to recommend using as many exemptions as we can for that one particular land use. We have more to learn. That's, that's where I am right now, but I just wanted to share with you that your engineering staff, your planning staff, your sustainability staff, and your fellow, we're, we're all talking to each other and glad to have a conversation with you about this.
And so I had another question, and maybe it was covered in the report-- And so, I had another question, and maybe it was covered in the report earlier. You know, with Half Moon Bay being in a unique location where we want visitors to enjoy the beautiful coastline, how would that be factored into a VMT study?
Do you mean in regards to like being a tourist destination?
Yes. Well, you know, I don't know, let's see, yeah, since they, you know, would contribute to greenhouse gases by virtue of driving into our community. So, how would that be factored into a VMT study, developing a standard for Half Moon Bay?
I think whenever we're trying to look at the citywide VMT average, I don't know how much we're going to be able to, in terms of how the transportation model is going to work and how that data comes out. I think that's the main reason why we can't use data, for example, such as CCAG's baselines because our data is so much different because we're in a rural location. So, I think, once we figure out how or what the data looks like, then we'll be able to figure out what mitigation or what type of baseline we'll be able to need to set.
Okay.
I'll also add, I think that we can look at this as an opportunity when maybe there are some bigger developments to help identify some programs to, for active transportation, so maybe some bike lanes or safer crossings for pedestrians, or maybe we can experiment with some other types of public transportation options. I know Sam Trans is looking at doing a micro-mobility pilot over here on the coast side, so maybe we can leverage that and expand it. Yeah, I think it's an opportunity when we have some bigger developments to look at, how can we make the experience better and also kind of take a little bit of a crack at that traffic issue that we have associated with tourism.
Thank you. Thank you for that. I have no more questions.
If I could follow up, great. So, I just wanted to make sure that LOS is measuring the level of service on a road versus VMT is actually looking at the greenhouse gases and also the emissions associated with a project. So, they're, they're addressing two different things, and so, they work hand in hand when it comes to safety. We're looking at the LOS and we're looking at to make sure that we have, you know, safe traffic patterns, safe traffic movability, I guess that's it. And then when we're looking at VMT, we're looking at, okay, yes, we're going to have all this traffic, how do we reduce our greenhouse gases with the vehicle miles traveled, right? So, it's, it's not that LOS is going away, it's just we have to work with it together in order to make sure that we're accomplishing safety and making sure we're getting traffic moving and that at the same time, making sure that we're not impacting, impacting the environment to that level of detriment, let's just say. Is that correct?
Yes, I think so. Yeah.
Thank you. I, go ahead, Steve.
Just since we have Sam here, one last question. Sam, in your example of calculating whether a hypothetical project will be 15% below the average, how in the world does the average get determined?
The average is determined through looking at, using the travel demand forecasting model first and foremost, and then through that, seeing how much people are, so, how, I don't know how the travel demand forecasting model works exactly because it's a very complex computer system that's taking into account a lot of different things, such as where the development is and what the other type of developments are around that specific development. But, the average is going to be calculated within the city, seeing how much people are driving through the different transportation analysis zones, if that makes sense.
Does each zone have its own average?
Each zone will have its own average, yes.
Okay, I get it.
But the, the traffic consultant that we will be hiring will be deter, will be helping us to determine those averages and that threshold.
Thank you again.
Okay. Are you guys done? Okay. Thank you so much for that presentation.
Thank you.
It was very informative and nice meeting you.
Nice meeting you too.
So, maybe Sam can come back and amend our circulation element forms. That'd be really cool.
Jill, do we need any motion to acknowledge or anything like that?
We would appreciate you doing that. I think that would be perfect, and we've tried to capture your notes broadly, but I know Sam and Veronica have, have them in detail, so I think you're in good shape.
Okay. Okay, so, at this point, I don't, is there a director's report?
We would like you to continue the H. N. Lane project to actually make a motion to continue it.
Oh, okay.
Scott.
Of course.
Scott, I think you have worked out a date certain.
Do we have to acknowledge by vote the study session that we just heard?
I don't think you have to. I think, I think we're fine. I think we're good. Thanks.
Yes, Acting Chair, that would probably be the right thing to do is to, you know, make a motion to continue H. N. Lane to a date certain of May 23rd.
Okay.
And that was by the request of the applicant, so.
Can someone make a motion? Steve?
I move that the planning commission continue the proposal for a project at H. N. Lane to a date certain of May 23rd on request of the applicant.
I second the motion.
Commissioner Jonas? Jonas, I'm sorry.
No worries.
Apologize.
Yes.
Commissioner Ruddick?
Yes.
And Vice Chair, Acting Chair Gossett?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you for that. We're always sorry when we have to do that, but we do it when we think it's good for the process and we think the applicant needs more time, so, so we want to honor that, so thank you. I have a brief director's report, but, with two highlights, so we'll start with one highlight. You've got a housing element in front of you. It is a public draft housing element, and I hope you got my email yesterday encouraging kind of a focus on plotting through it. It's a big book. There are quite a few sections of just, there's a data stack, for example, so don't let that intimidate you. It is, it was provided by A-BAG and it has to be included in our housing element. It is not for review, it is for reference, so hopefully that will ease your mind for about 80 of the pages. There's also a lot of maps and charts, so you'll, you'll click through, but we definitely want to make sure that you read the Constraints Technical Background Report very carefully. It's a complete rewrite from Cycle Five and it is meant to be wholly consistent with your recently certified local coastal land use plan, and it, it really guided the development of the housing plans. So, anyway, you all now have a hard copy of this and we'll have, we'll, we'll deliver hard copies to your colleagues who weren't able to make it tonight. So, on the 9th, we'll be meeting in this room at 6:00, starting for just a reception where staff will be available to meet with members of the public. We'll have a few display boards up, mostly maps, and, and we know people have questions about the housing sites and they'll want to learn more about that. So, we'll have that with a few snacks. You're more than welcome to swing through that. But then at 7:00, the joint work session begins with council. We're planning a room setup where council will be at the dais and we'll have the commission on one side and staff on the other, so that you will be participating with, with council. And, there'll be a presentation, of course, public hearing time, and then we're really looking forward to your discussion with council and council's direction to staff. This gives us an opportunity to hear all of your reactions just to your own reading of the element, as well as the input that you're going to hear from the community. And, then we, as your staff, are obligated to incorporate them into a revision that will go off to the Housing and Community Development Department for the state. So, we'll keep you posted on how all of that is going, and we're just excited to be at this point. We are running behind in our schedule, but we've hit this great milestone and I think we're going to pick it up now, so it's, it's really nice. Okay, so, your agenda forecast, aside from May 9th, we know you have H. N. Lane, but we were also looking to have the East Side Parallel Trail segment. I, I think I reported this out to you at the last meeting, that is still scheduled to go as far as I know. The May 10th, Community Development Director items, there are four. The Zabala House is coming forward for a conversion of some of the lodging rooms to apartments. This was a project previously approved by the Planning Commission several years ago, so we're, we're going to go ahead and process it at a director hearing level. Casamira, down at, I think, to Marotta Road, is that right? They need to replace structural components of their decks. They are, they are failing and it is not, it's not an exemption because it's within the Coastal Commission's appeals jurisdiction and I, I think with, yeah, and it's within a, it's, it's really close to the bluff edge. Otherwise, something like this would normally be a CDP exemption, but it is not. So, we're, we're processing it as we are supposed to and we have coordinated with Coastal Commission staff to make sure that we were. It's down at the north end of town, just before you go over, I think the new bridge is in, right? Yeah. Yeah, not, not the, the units that are on, right behind Rip Rap, literally kind of sitting almost on the beach, but behind it, there's townhomes. There's, what about a dozen? And, they have decks, they're cantilevered decks, and they need to be better buttressed. And so, that is a, a CDP, it can't be exempted. This kind of thing, maintenance and repair normally would qualify for an exemption, it's just a really unusual situation and because of its location. We have a, an addition at 1016 Bancroft, this is to a single-family home, and then we have a coastal development permit amendment for 321 Grinelli, and all of those items are going to be on the posted director agenda. Let's see. I, oh, I, also in your agenda forecast, I'm working with the city engineer and Public Works Director, Maziar, to get the, the capital improvement program to you. Just like you look at the housing element annual report, one of the things the commission does every year is, looks at the capital improvement program. We have a five-year program, we'll present all of it, you know, the, the future years are, are more bullet pointed, and the action for you is to consider this forthcoming fiscal year's capital improvement projects that are going forward to city council and their consistency with the local coastal land use plan and the general plan. So, this is something that goes through every year. And then, the other side of my, the sandwich on this, the sandwich is usually the good part in the middle, but this is, this is, this is also a highlight announcement. I'm just really happy to tell you that we have a new chief building official, and we've been exploring process improvements, as you know, with building inspection services, and we are just really happy to announce this, this change. Through, through our contractor for leave, we have a new resource. Keith Weiner is an experienced building official who will be, he's already on board, he's going to be providing oversight to the entire function of inspection and plan check. He is going to provide, probably on Wednesdays, over-the-counter permitting for minor permits like water heater replacements, the kinds of things that are, are done in other cities. We really want to be able to provide that level of service. And, best of all, he is a Half Moon Bay resident and he will be available to your community at the drop of a hat, and he is really excited about it. The January storms are a good example of why it is so important to have a local building official. There were some homes with some structural damage and having a building official on call and able to, to go out immediately and provide guidance with that is, is just really great. At some point, we'll find a connection so that we can have Keith come to one of your meetings and, and meet you all, and I just, I wanted you to know about that because that's part of our department function and it's just really, really important. So, anyway, welcome aboard, Keith. You don't know where, your ears are probably burning, but hopefully in a good way.
I'm sorry, Jill, what's his name?
Keith Weiner. And he's our building official. And, that is all I have. I do usually acknowledge the council that, that, you know, they just finished their priority session, that was last week. We are reviewing all of their input to prepare the work plan. Their next meeting is May 2nd, and from, from our shop, we're hoping to have another item related to 555 Kelly Avenue, which has to do with funding from San Mateo County. I'm trying to think of what else we have moving on. I'm, I'm just very, very focused on the housing elements, so I'm, I'm kind of in a, a little bit of a tunnel vision here. If anything occurs to you that we haven't announced, just let us know. I think, Bridgette, did you send the training opportunity?
The one for the 21 elements?
Yeah, that 21 elements training, they did it pre-COVID and it was great, and of course, it had to stop. It's free, they provide dinner, it's usually at the San Mateo Library downtown, and they're, they're just really great sessions and it's also an opportunity, opportunity to meet planning commissioners from other cities in San Mateo County, which I, I know is kind of a highlight. Some staff members will attend. I like to go just to sit in the back and listen. It, it's really well-done, so we hope you can do it. There were two save the dates. The first session, is it May 30th? And it's about housing. And the second session is going to be this fall in October, and we'll, we'll update that one as it firms up. What else? That's all I can. Oh, do you have an update on that? Ooh, Scott has a great date.
Yes, so. Had the opportunity to be the project manager for our, a new park here in town, Magnolia Park, between Seymour and Magnolia Streets, and we're doing a check-in with Parks and Rec Commission tomorrow night, actually, at the library at 6:00 PM. So, spread the word. This is a, this project has been on a little bit of a hiatus and we're bringing it back to life and doing a check-in with Parks and Rec Commission, and then we intend to go to the city council for a similar check-in probably next month. So, and then ultimately, this will come to the planning commission for coastal development permit and SEQA determination, so it's certainly something that'll, will be on the planning commission's radar in the future, so.
Thank you.
And I forgot something, and I apologize. So, last, I guess it was last week, maybe the week before now, I honestly don't know. Staff met with the Kenyatta, or excuse me, the Cypress Cove Homeowners Association and Neighbors for a community meeting. We met at Mariners Church to let, let the neighbors know that we are exploring a housing option at the Corp Yard property, which is one of your housing element sites that we've talked about in the past. And so, we had that meeting just to really learn more from the neighbors about their interests and concerns, and we will have a follow-up. about their interests and concerns. And we will have a follow-up meeting. It's going to be a community meeting, and it will be here in the Ted Akkock on May 8th, on a Monday. So it's, it's the day before, actually, your joint work session. And it will be at 6:30 PM. And we're, so we're planning, planning that now also concurrently. So you are more than welcome to attend, sit in and observe. I believe we're trying to make it hybrid, so you could also watch it if you're interested. In any case, we will have good notes from it, and we will make sure that those are conveyed relative to what you need to know for the housing element in particular. I probably am forgetting more things, but I'll just...
Stop.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So do we have any commissioner communications? Steve, Commissioner Riddick?
Thank you. I just wanted to say kudos to the whole team for the production of the, of this impressive document. I, I'm not sure I can even wrap my mind around how big a job that, that is in reality. But for you folks to soldier through that and create it in the, given the chaos of the last four months, it's very, very appreciated.
Thank you, Commissioner Riddick. Commissioner Johannes? Okay. All right. With no more communications, we will adjourn this meeting. Thank you.
We may need a motion to adjourn.
I think they ended it.
It's okay. It's okay. We're, we're all right. We're all, we're all present right now, so I think we're okay.
So we can, should we have a roll call to adjourn?
No, I think we're okay.
The council doesn't actually take a motion to adjourn. They just adjourn. The Planning Commission has had a history of making a motion to adjourn, and I think some of it might be because it's an opportunity to acknowledge something special, or sometimes there's something sad to, you know, there's, there's things that the commission brings to the community that's really important. And so I think the adjournment process were good tonight, but I think that's kind of where it came from.
This is my first time chairing a meeting, so I think, I sort of forgot that. And I kept calling you Steve.
If we have someone hybrid, we have to do roll call for everything. So if one is out doing a conference, we'll have to do a roll call.
Okay.